Good morning, I guess good afternoon, and welcome to the City Council work session. And our first order of business is an urban renewal agency. So I'm now closing the work session and opening the urban renewal agency. And I hope that's enough pounds of the hammer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn over to Amanda for her to take us through a brief presentation.
Thanks. Good afternoon. This is the urban renewal follow-up to the May 10 quiet zone work session. We're here to review the Riverfront District boundary related to the quiet zone in preparation for possible action at a later time. With the proposed boundary change and the Riverfront redevelopment on the horizon, it's the right time to put the district advisory committee in place. So today, we're asking for the agency board to approve an appointment process for the committee. Starting with the quiet zone, you'll recall that it has 10 crossings. The three easternmost crossings are in purple on this map. On May 10, council discussed use of Riverfront Urban Renewal for these crossings as recommended by the Railroad Quiet Zone Citizen Panel. On this map, the Riverfront Urban Renewal District is in blue. The Pearl and High Street crossings are just outside of the district boundary. To use urban renewal funds on the crossings, the boundary would need to be expanded. The benefits of the quiet zone for the Riverfront District would include safety for bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorists, reduction of noise pollution, sound impact for health and livability concerns, and increased developability of the Riverfront redevelopment property, including the ability to utilize federal funds for affordable housing. The expansion that would be needed to include the Pearl and High Street crossings is .76 acres. It's less than a 1% expansion, so the approval process would be through an agency board resolution. The key next step would be for the district's advisory committee to review the proposed expansion. So let's talk about the advisory committee. As we're gearing up for more activity in the district, it's time to put together the committee, the Riverfront Renewal Guides, or the River Guides for short. Today, we want to hear from the agency board on what the appointment process should include. I'll review the options later in the presentation. The purpose of the committee is to meet as needed and advise on best outcomes for the community. The committee would include seven members that represent the richness of the community's perspectives, neighborhoods, and population demographics. Here's a draft timeline. Today, you would choose the process for appointment of committee members. We'll then do recruitment, selection, and orientation. In October or November, the committee will provide feedback on the boundary expansion for the quiet zone. And then the agency board would consider the resolution prior to the end of the year. For today's action, the appointment options are for the mayor to nominate and the agency board to approve the members, or for the agency director to select the members. We're available for questions.
I have Betty in the queue. Anybody else so far? Claire, Alan, Greg? Do you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, Betty, go for it.
Well, thank you. It seems that there's an assumption that we're going to expand the urban renewal district. Otherwise, we wouldn't need a... And also, an assumption that we're going to spend money for quiet zone. Are both of those things true?
The follow-up to the May 10 work session, and council asked for...
Yeah, so what you might remember on... The council eventually, or the agency board, still has to make the final approval of the expansion. In the previous work session, the majority of the council said, yes, we want to continue to move forward with this process. And so we're just continuing to move forward.
Did we vote to expand the district? I don't think so. Okay. So I'm really concerned about that. Aside from the appointment of the committee, that, I think, depends is... Depends on whether we're having an expansion. And my biggest... One of my biggest objections to urban renewal in the first place is it's too easy to spend the money without public approval. And a quiet zone is going to cost a lot of money. If we're going to do that, and I think this is still on the subject, we should... There should be a vote of the people to spend that much money. And I think we learned from Dr. Manross that people in general are not that interested in the quiet zone. It's the whole city who would be paying for it. If it's urban renewal, it's still public money. So I'm very concerned about just sort of assuming that we're going to expand the urban renewal district. That's all I have to say for now. When we get to the committee, I'll say something else if we're going to have it. Thank you.
So, city manager, didn't a council majority vote to move forward with the quiet zone?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So we took a formal vote, and that's the direction that this council has given. And we just have not identified how we're going to fund it yet.
Right. And what the council hasn't voted, or the board hasn't voted, on whether or not to approve the expansion of the urban renewal district.
Sure. So that's part of this conversation, is to follow up on that action that the council majority said, yes, we'd like to implement a quiet zone. Now we need to find the funding. This is one potential way to fund some of the crossings.
Correct.
Okay. So in terms of the committee question, when was the last time such a committee was convened in the past?
The Riverfront District hasn't had an advisory committee since that was added to the plan in the 2004 amendment. And the district activity hasn't warranted it yet.
And what I'm gleaning is the purpose of convening this committee is to examine the question of whether or not we should expand to capture those two crossings and to make a recommendation one way or the other to the council?
That's one of their roles. They will also advise on future activities of the plan.
So they wouldn't just be convened for this question?
Correct.
It'd be an ongoing committee that would be advising how Riverfront Urban Renewal funds are expended?
Right.
So it would, in effect, add another layer of community involvement and transparency, presuming we make sure the minutes are put out and all the other things we should be doing to the process of the urban renewal?
Correct.
Well, my other question was, how was the past committee appointed? But that's not a question you can answer.
Excuse me. So Claire, there is a downtown urban renewal advisory committee. If you want, Amanda can talk about how that was appointed and what they do.
That'd be great.
That was my question.
Sorry. We have efficient staff.
So the downtown urban renewal plan calls for an expenditure review panel, and they look at the prior year's spending. You received their FY '16 report at the end of June. And before that, before the 2010 Plan Amendment, the plan called for an advisory committee, and that was the Eugene Redevelopment Advisory Committee. And that was set up through a department advisory committee. So the city manager appointed that.
Well, in terms of the appointment process, I don't necessarily have strong feelings one way or the other. I kind of think I would lean towards having the mayor nominate and the board approve, I think would be an efficient and logical way to proceed.
And that is how the... I'm sorry, I didn't answer that part. The expenditure review panel was not mayor nominated and agency board selected. And the street repair review panel, the other panel you're familiar with, that was city manager appointed.
Thank you.
All right, Alan?
But the street review panel, that's not urban renewal district. That's just an advisory committee.
Just a different panel committee.
Right. I agree with Claire. Probably the mayor nominates, council approves is the way that I'd probably like to see this go as well, since it is a standing committee that will be advising the board, which would be the city council, over time. So this is an expensive thing to do, the quiet zone. And since we're not putting it into the road bond, and this could be $5 to $10 million, because there's 10 of them, what is the... Do we have a plan sketched out for how to fund the ultimate quiet zone, all 10 of them? Because one of the things that we heard a lot, and Claire's word, we're saying, wait a minute, what about our side of the thing? If you're just doing downtown, you've got to do the whole thing. And I agree with that. The whole thing needs to be done. It can be done in phases, but unless you... I was just up the other night hearing the... I live two miles away from the nearest one, and I still hear it. I think the sound just goes straight up the valley. And at one point, there was... Somebody did a calculation that almost 1,000 blasts a day from the quiet zone, from the railroads, because they have to do three per intersection. And then there's 10 of them, and there's up to 20 to 30 trains a day that go through it. So what's our plan to move forward?
So the recommendation of the committee that we worked with was to fund the east end with urban renewal funds and the west end with a bond measure. It wasn't specific to the street bond measure. So it could be its own bond measure. But we also identified for the quiet zone citizen panel a whole list of funding sources, from the general fund to... The road fund could be used for the work that's in the public right-of-way. Block grant money could be used. But all of the other sources required making a trade-off between some other program that's already funded. So if it was general fund, it'd be taking money from capital funding that's dedicated to parks and facilities. The community development block grants are focused on housing or on the homeless issue. So we could come back and talk about how to fund that west end. But I think the important part that we were trying to accomplish was to... We've got the attention of the railroad, and they've been working with them. And it's to keep that momentum going forward so we don't lose that momentum and then have to try to restart it. So it's the... Even on the east end, it's probably a three-year process between negotiating a construction agreement with the railroad and they're doing their... Because all of the work within the railroad right-of-way is done by the railroad. They have to design it, they have to procure equipment, and then they have to do the construction. So I think the goal was to, while not knowing how to fully fund the whole quiet zone, was to continue the momentum we have with ODOT Rail and with Union Pacific and with Federal Rail Administration and focus on the east end and sort out the west end.
So three years from saying, yes, we want you to work on it, to getting it constructed, that what that three-year period was?
Well, it's three years from being able to write the railroad a check for... They won't start work until we fund their design work. So it'd probably be three years. The goal is to get that sorted out by the end of this calendar year. So it'd be three years from the end of this calendar year.
Another source of money might be the Comcast money, although that's been allocated. Is it one place or the other? How would that work?
Well, you know, obviously, the council can always appropriate whatever dollars the city has. And so through this budget process, the majority of the Comcast money fell back into the reserves. We recommended that $9 million stay there to make sure that we have those dollars. There was an additional $7 million, $7.5 million that a portion of that, the budget committee and the council recommended to be used, $1 million for the shelter, some dollars for ambulances, or some HSC money and some other kinds of things. And so there's some remaining money that the council could consider for this type of a project. In the future, we never know how much marginal beginning working capital is going to show up often. That's been much tighter the last couple of years. That's a potential source into the future as well as we work through supplemental budgets.
Mark, maybe you can refresh my memory about the cost of the three that are in the Riverfront Urban Renewal District and then the other seven.
Yeah, we estimated the total at $7.1 million, $3.5 in the urban renewal district, and $3.6 million on the west end.
Thanks.
Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I think most of my questions have been answered. But I have a couple of other questions. One, and I think we've had the answer to this before, but to kind of refresh my memory and our collective memories, how did Salem fund their quiet zone? I know that they were fairly successful in doing so, and they didn't have much resistance, you know, in terms of making that process work.
They funded theirs through a general obligation bond. It wasn't specific to the quiet zone. The quiet zone was a small part of a much larger transportation general obligation bond that went for pavement preservation, went for capacity improvements in the quiet zone.
So ultimately, they went out to the voters?
Right.
Okay. And then my second question would be with regard to other funding sources. So this might be a stretch, but we have some... We built up some reserves in terms of our SDC funds. Could that be utilized in terms of funding a project like this? Or is that more of a stretch?
Well, two things. One is the... There's a large balance in parks. There's not a large balance in transportation SDCs, and you can only spend it on the system for which it was collected. The two pieces of system development charges are an improvement fee, which is... Has to be spent on capacity improvements, and this wouldn't qualify for a capacity improvement. The reimbursement component can be spent on anything related to the transportation system, as long as the capital improvement. So it's possible you could spend some of that on the quiet zone, though a previous council resolution, going back probably 10 years, was to focus that funding on pavement preservation. And that's all we've done for that intervening period.
How much do we have in the transportation SDC fund?
Well, in the reimbursement, we collect probably $200,000 to $300,000 a year.
Okay, so...
That was part of Jennifer Willer's presentation a week ago.
All right. I think that's it for the moment.
Chris?
Thank you. Could you... First off, I think the idea of an advisory committee is a good one, regardless of what we do with regard to quiet zones. I think having an advisory committee is a good additional public participation step. Could you remind me what the current income and expense is for the current Riverfront Urban Renewal District? Do you know what that is? Do you have a ballpark?
The property tax revenue is about $2 million.
Okay. Annual? Do we know offhand what the current expenses are for the urban renewal district? Is there any projects going on right now?
There are a few projects. Well, we're purchasing the eWeb property.
Right, right.
And we're contributing to the bike stations that are within the district.
Yeah. But right now, that $2 million revenue that we're getting is not being... We're not using all of that up. It's not being over-expended, or we don't need to increase the capacity at this point.
Right.
What I'm trying to get at, the question I'm getting at is, if we were to expand this to cover those two pieces of property so that we could eventually put in crossings, that would be an expense. And so I'm saying, what's the capacity we have right now? What is going out of it? And then would this be able to accommodate that additional expense? And it sounds like with the annual revenue coming in and the limited amount of expense going out, if you were to expand it, it would not tax, pun intended. It would not create undue burden on the revenue. Right now, we wouldn't have to expand the revenue in order to be able to accommodate this.
Right. This current spending limit after the eWeb property purchase would be $21.1 million approximately. And the cash on hand after that purchase is estimated at $3.6 million.
Okay. So there would not be a need to create any additional burden on the taxpayers to cover this within the urban renewal district? The Riverfront Urban Renewal District? Okay. So this could be done without creating any sort of additional requirement on the part of taxpayers?
Right. The current district, the current revenue expenditure model within the district can accommodate this without having to change any of those other...
Perfect. That's exactly the answer I was wanting to find out about. The second, then, is this is a pretty significant area, and we're in the process of negotiating the purchase of the property for ultimate development. And one of the things we've talked about for the urban renewal district, the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, is the ability for the capacity within that to cover also infrastructure improvements, park improvements, other things going on in here. So trying to put on your, you know, project into the future hat, look at your crystal ball. If we were to expand this to cover these railroad crossings, which is a part of that development thinking, would it also hinder our capacity to also be able to fund the infrastructure and park improvements that we want to do as part of the ultimate Riverfront development? Or would it create a burden in that way?
No. I think, you know, the total capacity is, what'd you say, $21 million or something like that? And so you can, you don't have to. You can spend up to $21 million. And how you choose to spend that becomes a question. So it's railroad crossing zones are infrastructure that add value to the site and add value to future development and add value to what you can do on that development. For example, affordable housing becomes a much more practical idea if you have a railroad quiet zone, maybe if you don't. But then you can... Also can spend money on other types of infrastructure, whether it's the park or whether it's roads or not. You don't have to spend it all. So it doesn't create any new burden on the system.
Great. That's what I'm saying. So we could afford, within the capacity, the current capacity of the urban renewal district, to not only pay for these railroad crossings, but not inhibit our thinking in terms of infrastructure and park underwriting that may need to go forward. There's more than enough capacity to do both and wouldn't create any additional tax burden on the residents.
True.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other... Mike, questions? No? Anybody else? I just... I guess I just have a comment sort of playing off on what Chris had said, which it seems to me we are in the process of negotiating an agreement on this property. And I'm assuming that the timing, that this is sensitive in that sense, our commitment towards a quiet zone may have some significance in that conversation. So I don't know if you thought on that or...
You know, I think any developer, potential developer, the more certainty that we can provide and the less outstanding risks that they have is always a positive. And so, as Claire mentioned, the majority of the council has said yes on the quiet zone. And so this really has a lot to do with how that's going to get implemented financially. And so if a future developer knows that the council or the board has essentially said yes to the quiet zone, yes, we have the funding in place, and Mark and his staff are moving forward, then they have certainty around that, and then they can use that as part of their calculation into their development. So that's all positive.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. If the council were to approve using urban renewal funds for these three quiet zones within the urban renewal district, we'd still have, under the cap, $16,000, $17,000? Not for a city hall, you know. Okay, thanks.
There could be a conversation.
Just asking. You know, I'm just asking.
But that would require an expansion of the boundary.
Well, while we're at it, brother, you know.
Okay. Yes.
One last question. So in terms of what the infrastructure ultimately would look like, are we talking about, besides kind of the railroad stuff, would that include sound walls and those kinds of things that would be possibly erected as barriers to, you know, sound going through? And what would that look like? You know, maybe a barrier that would be between the tracks and the development, the Riverfront development? How would that, you know, look visually?
There wouldn't be any of those types of barriers. The work would be done at each individual crossing, which then precludes a requirement for the train engineer to...
Blow the horn.
Blow their horn for... Which the routine horn. So if there's someone trespassing on the tracks, they'll still blow their horns in those instances, but they wouldn't do the routine noises. The only other... The only work outside really of the crossings themselves is the additional fencing that the panel recommended to try to preclude trespassing on the railroad right-of-way.
Would we also be funding any of the PTC, Positive Train Control aspects that are now in place or are beginning to become more developed as, you know, back east, there's been a number of, you know, train accidents and other things that have gone on and derailments? And now, Positive Train Control is being pushed. Would that be part of the equation?
Not that the city would fund. I mean, perhaps a railroad, if they were going to do work at a crossing, they could incorporate that type of technology.
Could we insist that the railroad incorporate Positive Train Control?
Certainly.
As part of the negotiation? I mean, that's a safety feature. I know you don't negotiate with U.P., but, you know, I mean...
That certainly can be part of the conversation.
Yeah. I mean, I think that it should be part of the conversation. I mean, there's a big safety piece here, you know, besides the noise issue. And if we can get our nose into that tent, as much as we should be able to get it into that tent, you know, I'd like us to see us to at least have that conversation around Positive Train Control.
All right. Any other council comments? So I just need to be clear on the process here. We have two... We have two things to do, but we have actually only one thing that we're voting on, which is the formation of the committee and what that's going to look like. The rest is information.
Correct. So the request for you today is to approve that the committee be formed and choose whether you want it to be option one, which is the mayor council, or option two, which is the city manager. Later on, I think in Amanda's timeline, it was December when you would come back after the advisory committee made its recommendation to decide whether to expand, to amend the plan, to expand the boundaries.
Right.
So today, it's just about the advisory committee.
Okay. All right. So maybe we can put the motion on the table and then discuss?
Question for you. Do you have a problem with maybe the nominations of the...
No. I'm comfortable with that responsibility.
Then I move to approve the formation of a Riverfront Urban Renewal District Advisory Board and the mayor nominating and the agency board approving Riverfront Urban Renewal District Advisory Board committee members.
Second?
Okay. Discussion? Betty?
Are we assuming that the... By doing this, are we assuming that the district will be expanded?
No.
No? Okay. I think that that's the better of the two choices we have. But how about having applications for membership and the council approving them, the way we do for committees and commissions? I think that might be a better way to form a committee.
So you can correct me. My understanding is that I would nominate, and I could figure out how to solicit those.
Yeah, but that's different from...
Right. Yes.
Correct. You're correct, Mayor. And certainly, the council doesn't have to approve your nominations, which the council has not always done, and could substitute somebody else.
has not always done, and could substitute somebody else.
But I move to amend that we follow the procedure that we do for boards and commissions, with people applying to be on the committee, the council reviewing the applications and deciding which ones we should interview.
Okay. So that, that's a...
That's a motion to amend.
That's a motion to amend and it's been seconded.
Correct.
Okay. So you're, we're now talking about that, this amendment. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. How does that distort your timeline?
You're planning on doing a recruitment, advertising and soliciting applications and then providing those to...
So it doesn't or it does?
It doesn't change, that I'm aware of. But I need to walk through that specific process with the city manager's office.
Practically speaking, it means, I believe, that by the time you come back from your summer recess, you would have applications that the council could then review and make appointments toward the end of September, early October. If the committee is appointed, let's say by the first half of October, can you still meet your timeline? So it sounds like it wouldn't affect the goal of having a decision by the council by the end of the year.
Further question to the maker of the amendment. Does your amendment preclude the mayor from appointing people who have not applied?
I would think so.
Or recommending, or appointing or...
Recommending? So if they haven't applied, she can't recommend them?
She could ask them to apply, I assume.
Her process doesn't involve the mayor at all. It's the boards and commission process.
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Claire?
Thanks. I won't support the amendment because I suggested that the mayor nominate and we approve or not her nominations. I don't have a strong rationale from that, other than I'd like her to do that work for us. Quite frankly. And I also think by doing that, that's kind of a two-step screening process, in a sense. So the mayor is going to vet them, make recommendations, and then we get to decide whether or not we think these are the right people or solicit other people. So I, in some ways, I think it increases the depth of the process rather than just having them come straight to the council through an application process.
I have Chris and then Greg.
The current Downtown Urban Renewal District Review Committee is appointed by the city manager.
The was nominated by the mayor and selected by the agency board and...
Oh, for downtown urban renewal?
Yes.
Okay.
We had people apply.
Okay. So the current system for the Downtown Urban Renewal District is the one that Claire recommends and the one that we're currently using.
Yes.
So this would mirror what we're already doing with the Downtown Urban Renewal District.
Right.
Is there, in terms of the appointment of members to an urban renewal district, is there a need or a value in appointing members with special expertise or skills?
Yes. And that was included in the draft framework. We envisioned having some members with development, financial or architecture expertise, ecological, sustainability or river conservation expertise, and the possibility also of having members who were on addition, other committee, city committees.
Theoretically, you could get that special skill or expertise in either system. But by having the mayor appoint and perhaps do outreach to specific talents and skills, you might be able to get them more easily if you use the system. The Urban Renewal Agency still has the ability to veto whatever the mayor is recommending. But it would seem that the mayor, I'm guessing, based on what she just said, would probably pursue some sort of a process that would try to draw as many people into it and still be seeking special expertise and skill as well. The Urban Renewal Agency gets a chance to kind of review that and confirm it. The system seems to have worked okay with the Downtown Urban Renewal District, and my understanding is it's worked fine for years. So I don't know why we should, we should create a new system. I understand the boards and commissions, but to me, those are a little bit different than the urban renewal districts in terms of the kinds of talent, skills and capabilities you're looking for. And as long as the urban renewal district has the ability to review and pass on those recommendations, I think there's still the accountability element there. So I'm comfortable with that.
Greg?
This doesn't preclude members of the Urban Renewal Agency, us around the table, from making recommendations to the mayor, correct?
Yes.
For appointments. So we can make recommendations and say, you know, "Mayor suggests that, you know, you do outreach to person X or person Y." And then, you know, we'll come back and review that together as the Urban Renewal Agency for appointment.
Correct.
Okay.
Alan?
Betty, it wasn't clear whether or not you had intended to follow the framework within attachment D, which had all of those guidelines in there except for you're just doing the straightforward, we pick whoever we want, or to commission stuff.
If you look at that, it says people from other commissions, that could be anybody. It's not, I would have different qualifications if I were doing it, but I think we can list on the recruitment qualifications that we would like. As for the mayor's appointments, I don't think we have, we have hardly ever disagreed. She appoints and we say, okay. I think it's better if we all look at them, at the applications. It's a more transparent, it's more possible for the public to be involved in it if we do it that way. And they can, the public can look at, can suggest people and look at what we do, what we do with the applicants. And I just think it's a better, in all the years I've been on the council, when the mayor appoints, it's very rare that we do anything different. And it's as if we're saying, this way we don't have to agree with, disagree with the mayor or agree. We just say who we think should be interviewed and we can consider qualifications. But I do not think that being on another commission or committee is a qualification at all. Thank you.
So I actually do like the food groups that were listed here and for this kind of technical advisory committee, I think that's important to have kind of that breadth other than just having anybody that we want to pick. I kind of, I trust the mayor to find out these things. I'm wondering if the mayor would agree to a process where you do a recruitment and have applications and then we would, you would nominate from those applications, but we would see all the applications? That's a typical way of...
I'm open to any process here, actually. I mean, it will be my first time around doing this, so I'm open to whatever process seems most, you know, we get the broadest number. And I am sympathetic with Betty's concern that, you know, we don't want to be always plucking people out of the same basket. And it's good to be broader and so it helps to have some kind of outreach. So yes, I'm open to whatever process council seems to agree.
And when we've done this before, we have seen all the applications, along with the ones that, the one that the mayor picks. So I'm okay with this process as originally suggested.
Emily?
Thank you. I'm not understanding why the Urban Renewal Agency Advisory Committee is different than the board and commissions we already selected. I don't know who would answer that, but that doesn't, I don't get it.
It feels like that's more among yourselves on how you view those two commissions or committees.
There's actually a hybrid. We actually, several of the boards and commissions are appointed by the mayor with this process and then they nominate, for instance, well, one is one. There's several different ones that are, that are done that way. So it's probably about a quarter of them are done that way and about three quarters of them are done by the councils during the selection process. So we don't have a strictly boards and commissions process, per se. We've done it both ways, we do it both ways currently.
And do you see advantages or disadvantages between the two ways? What do you think the different result would be?
It's easier for us if she does it.
Well, I reject that. We've been elected to do the work.
No, no.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah. I would think to answer that also, different committees perform different functions. And I think those that are related to advising the council on issues of policy or operation tend to be ones that you want to have the council more involved in the application and review and appointment of. Ones that are review committees, which basically look at a set of tasks or strategy, whatever, not necessarily making policy recommendations as a regular part of their work, but mostly reviewing performance, street bond review committees, urban renewal district review committees, things like that. I don't think they operate quite the same way that a board or a commission does, the kind of work that they do. And that's why I asked the question about special expertise or talent. Those kind of review committees tend to be looking at specific kinds of work and specific kinds of tasks, and their expertise or talent can really help them in doing that kind of review. So at least in my mind, that's one of the differences between just a typical board or commission and a review committee and the kind of work that they do.
Okay. I have Betty back and Claire and, was it, Betty and then Claire.
We are talking about this committee making recommendations. So it is not just doing a review of what's been done. When we used to have a citizen involvement committee, which I keep saying we should have again, that committee had to approve committee, special committee appointments. And also, they had a part in deciding or recommending at least, and that was one more step where the public was involved. But if the council's involved, then we're closer to the, there are more of us, we're closer to public input. And I just, I think that it's our responsibility to do this.
All right. Claire?
So I don't think the original motion was ducking responsibility on the part of the council. I think it's a vetting process and then a recommendation. I guess I feel the difference here for this particular committee is the mix of very specific skill sets that we're looking for. And having a single person in, the mayor, do that kind of legwork and vetting and bringing those to us, I just feel is a lot more practical than having an eight-member board try to do that work. So that's, that's part of why I'm supporting the other notion. I think the police commission is also appointed by the mayor, and I don't know the history of that. If I'm, am I wrong about that? Oh, my apologies.
Sustainability's like that, though.
Oh.
That we all appoint.
We get to appoint. In any case, I mean, I think there's probably historical reasons for the differences. But I think in this case, so they wouldn't be making a policy recommendation, they would be making technical recommendations related to whether or not it made sense to do certain things within the urban renewal district and advise on technicalities around the other development pieces beyond just the quiet zone conversation.
Mike? Did you have a comment?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. I think it's worth taking a moment to notice what's, what's going on, though. We're all talking about the process by which we choose a committee that's going to recommend to this committee what that committee thinks we ought to do. And I mean, which is kind of funny, really. But the point is because the work of how we rebuild that riverfront matters that much and it matters to a lot of people. And for that reason, and that reason only, I will probably support Betty's amendment. But please, I'd be just as happy if the mayor appointed people that we got to review as well. I don't see the differences that much, but symbolically, it's all of us choosing those who are going to recommend how we move forward with redeveloping our riverfront. So I, I'll support that, but it's not that consequential a decision, I don't think, but okay.
Jennifer? Okay. So I just want to make sure I understand this. No matter which way we do it, we're going to be soliciting applications from the public?
Yes.
And then we'll all have access to all of those applications and we can look at all of them?
Yes.
Okay. So it seems like it makes some people more comfortable if the mayor is not involved. And to be perfectly honest, it seems like a very little difference to me. So, and I think making people comfortable is very important. So I would support Betty's motion because I can see no huge reason to go one way or the other. So that's just my opinion.
Alan?
There is a significant difference in that Betty's proposal does not include the balanced committee recommendation of these six different slots. It's just whoever we appoint, we appoint. This proposal would, in attachment D, would have these slots filled by recruitment, then nominated by the board and then selected by us. So it is a substantially different process to have these particular skill sets being identified to be filled versus just generic skill sets. And personally, I think that these six slots are important to have when you consider what this group is going to be doing, which, as it says in the charter, would involve investments in infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, railroad access, housing, commercial and more class parks. So it's really more technical than it is policy. It's advising us on those things. So having those, those different perspectives, I think, is important. When we do boards and commissions, there isn't a tendency to fill those kinds of skill sets. There's just a tendency to get the best people that are in the pool. And I think if we do it this way, then mayor could then recruit people for those slots.
Gosh, I hope we get to break this on.
You know, and I think this would be really funny if I have to break a tie on this one, just saying that my first tie break is, do I take on the work or do I leave it with you folks, right? That'll be really great. But wait, Betty, I just do want to say a couple of things. One is, so I have Betty and Claire. One is that, you know, as counselors, you can beat the bushes in your own wards to identify those people that you think need to be represented on this committee and bring them to my attention. And I also want to say that it is August we're talking about doing this. It is not the best time to be releasing a request for applications. So a kind of a direct appeal to people who are qualified is likely to be more timely than, you know, our publishing on the website and other ways that we can do this. So I'm comfortable either way, but just sort of want to point out that there is a way in which you can own this, you can distribute that information to your wards, you can share that information with me. I will be very open about that process and very receptive to your insights about who to approach. So just put that out there. Okay. Now I have Betty again, Claire, and then Emily.
I strongly disagree that the other committees all don't need some expertise. The planning commission could certainly use it. They make important decisions that most people aren't even aware of how powerful they are. And this is not different from that at all. And my intention was not at all to exclude the mayor. I hope she would be involved. But I think we all have enough brains to look at the, at the applications and see what kind of qualifications the people have. And I certainly don't think the one which listed somebody from other boards and commissions involved any special qualifications. I don't think they all did. And I think it's, I just think it's better to have a lot more people involved. If you want to say that the mayor could be involved too, that's fine with me, but I'm sure that she can, can recommend people and urge people to apply as well as we can. Thank you.
All right. Claire?
Thank you. So I guess I'm just, I am concerned about the practicalities of just putting an application out there. If the agency members, if we take it on as our responsibility, I don't think we're going to be running around town asking specific people to apply, whereas I kind of assume that the mayor would make some phone calls and encourage specific people who she believes are qualified to fill what is a more technical body than our general boards and commission. I think what Alan was saying about that is when we consider folks for the Sustainability Commission or the Human Rights Commission, yes, we personally may be looking for a mix of skill sets, but there's not a list of slots that we're trying to make sure are filled that are required by those boards. So I think that's the difference. I appreciate Jennifer's comment about making folks feel comfortable, but I do think that can happen even in a mayor nominates, board approves process. We can talk about what applications were submitted, the rationale for choosing these particular people. We can ask the mayor questions about why she selected individuals, these individuals and not others. I would be more supportive of Counselor Taylor's amendment if she... I would be more supportive of Councilor Taylor's amendment if she was willing to include these specific, we could throw out the other boards and commissions one, but these specific criteria for filling the slots. But I then still worry about the timing. So I think if, if, you know, we really want to land on something coming back to us by December in terms of this board having some time to work, I think having us fill the ranks is impractical.
Emily?
Thank you. I'm wondering why we're going to do recruitment in August since everybody's out of town. We have a December deadline, but that doesn't seem like the right time. I bet nobody wants to be making phone calls in the next week saying, hey, would you like to step up and do some more work? So maybe, you know, we should do it at the end of September when everybody's already back and interested in these things. So I'm hesitant to have them chosen either way if recruitment is only in August.
August and September was the draft timeline for recruitment.
Well, then if it's in September too, then, then we don't have the problem of, of August, so.
Okay, so are we ready for a vote on the, on Betty's proposed amendment that this be done through an application process with council review? Okay? And approval? All in favor? One, two, three, four, just so I have to break the tie, just so I have to break the tie. Dang. Enjoy it.
All those opposed?
Yeah, you do. I do have to ask that. Oh, all those opposed. One, two, three, four. Okay, I'm going to go with the opposed and take it on myself.
I feel your pain, Mayor.
Now we go back to the original motion. Okay, so the original motion, all in favor? Oh.
Moved to approve the formation of a riverfront, urban renewal district advisory committee and that the mayor nominate and the agency board approve the riverfront, urban renewal district advisory board committee members.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, thank you. That passes.
More than seven and a half.
And I'll do my best for all of you.
Fifty minutes. That was fun. That was good.
Okay, so now we can close the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency, and we are ready.
Can we have a process session on process? No, because we won't find the process to schedule it.
Mayor, if you would just utter the words and reopen the meeting of the city council.
Oh, and reopen the meeting of the city council. Work session. Okay, on to the next.
Mayor, I'll just turn over to Mike to lead us through this conversation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This work session provides an opportunity to share information related to whether Eugene should adopt a thousand-foot separation standard between new and existing retail marijuana businesses. Council discusses option in March 15th and chose not to take action at that time. And today I'll provide a brief overview of four main topics. Current number of marijuana locations in town, highlights of an incident report related to marijuana businesses, a draft ordinance requiring the separation, and finally, information related to how marijuana businesses may have impacted the local commercial lease rates. So back for some context, the state of Oregon allows communities to determine whether there should be a separation standard. They chose not to make that a requirement for retail marijuana. Portland, Hillsborough, Beaverton, Gresham, and Bend do have the thousand-foot separation, but Salem, Corvallis, Springfield, and Medford do not have one. So our land use code considers both medical and recreational marijuana to be as a specialty store, and they're allowed in the C1, C2, and C3 zones. Oregon Liquor Control Commission requires the city to verify that a proposed retail marijuana use is in the correct zone as part of their application process. So there are 56 state-approved licenses in Eugene, and Exhibit A in your packet shows those locations. But of these licensed locations, there are 27 businesses currently open. So what we've seen are approved licenses, they go through the state process, but then some of those never show up into an actual store, or sometimes it takes a long time to get a store open. Forty of the 56 approved locations are located closer than 1,000 feet from at least one other approved location. And 1,000 feet is about two and a half standard blocks, just to kind of get a visual on that. And generally, those that are in the closest proximity to each other are either in the greater downtown area or near Sixth and Seventh Avenues east of Chambers. So at the end of the March work session, based on the discussion there, the city manager suggested that we come back with some information on crime incidents related to marijuana stores at a later date. And so thanks to Eugene Police Department, Attachment B provides that information. And I just want to share a few highlights from that report. The report covers incidents from the beginning of 2014 through May of this year. It establishes a baseline for reported crimes citywide compared with two categories. The first one is reported incidents occurring on the property of a retail marijuana store. And then the second one category is incidents occurring within 1,000 feet from those stores. Now, citywide incidents fell 7% during this time period. And daily average incidence is a common term EPD uses to track frequency of events. And I want to point out that the daily average incidents occurring on the property for marijuana businesses are really hovering near zero in those graphs. That's at the very bottom line. And so that's an important distinction, since it means that a great majority of crime incidents in the report occurred not on the property but with property, but within 1,000 feet of that location, and it may not have anything to do with business. So specific types of crime that increased during this time period are forgeries, a 49% increase, disorderly conduct, 35%, driving under the influence, 33%, assaults, 32%. And using a false ID is in that subcategory of forgeries, and so that could be one reason why that was the highest increase. We also saw some crimes that decreased significantly during this time period. Robbery, down 28%. Drug violations, down 22%. And burglary, down 13%. Regarding topic number three, draft ordinance, Attachment C, has been provided as requested. And if the council directs the city manager to adopt a new requirement in the land use code, it would follow the code amendment process in Chapter Nine, and it's estimated that would take about six to nine months to complete. And finally, the, the last topic, council requested information on how retail marijuana businesses may have impacted the commercial lease rates in town and the local market. And there's no database or systematic way for us to provide statistically valid information on that. I contacted four commercial real estate brokers on this subject to get their perspectives and insights. And before I share that, I just want to clarify that our focus today is on retail marijuana in commercial zones as opposed to marijuana growing operations or extraction uses that would be located in industrial zones. So in talking with them, those commercial brokers, common themes emerged. So first of all, you've probably heard location, location, location. So with commercial real estate, that is one of the main factors. And the trend has been that a great majority of retail marijuana businesses are not at the most prominent locations. Those leases that have been signed typically are for property that may have been vacant longer than average while it's been waiting to be leased. And so these businesses have decreased the number of underutilized commercial properties in town. Another theme is that in most cases marijuana businesses are willing to invest a significant number of improvements after the lease has been signed, and this has resulted in some timely upgrades to older properties. Work could include aesthetic improvements. I think we've seen that driving around with kind of facelift type of work. Or getting building permits to upgrade plumbing, electrical, heating, cooling systems, or even mating state requirements for security and camera systems. And so all of those improvements, the property owners and customers will benefit from those from, from years to come. A third theme that was prominent is that due to federal laws, properties with a mortgage are not good candidates for retail marijuana leasing. And there's, as a ballpark figure, between 20, 25%. Most people felt 20, 25% of commercial properties in Eugene are owned free and clear without any mortgage or financing tied to it. And so there's not the federal law interaction there. So the perspective was that this means the impact for marijuana businesses on the total commercial market is limited, because they're really only impacting that 20, 25% of those available. And also, general consensus of the brokers I talked with felt that almost all of the commercial property available for marijuana sales, those without financing and with property owners willing to lease to marijuana use, have already been leased. So due to this, it's expected that the growth of new retail marijuana businesses will be slow in the, in the near future. And so in summary, general opinion is that the current strong economy has had more to do with commercial rates in Eugene rather than the number of new marijuana stores. And only time will tell whether the local market will support, support those existing businesses that are open now. So I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. That was very interesting, very informative. So I have Mike, Claire, and Alan.
Greg.
And Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd say first that one of the interesting thing, and thank you very much for the presentation. That was an excellent presentation. I appreciate all the information here, too. One of the interesting things to me is, I think, unless I'm reading this wrong, that mine is the only ward in the city that doesn't have a pot shop in it.
You've done good, Mike.
I feel, I feel neglected in some way, I think.
For avoiding you.
Well, I don't know that it's that. I think my, well, I won't go down that road. Let's not waste time.
Less retail.
I would say that my concern in bringing this up in the first place and asking for consideration of this was not so much about the vacant properties, although I appreciate what you're saying there, as, as the larger point that you made, which is that if only 25% of vacant properties are owned outright, those are the only good candidates for potential pot shops. That actually puts more pressure on the businesses already in place who are in buildings that are owned free and clear to have their rents raised to a point of unaffordability because of the demand. The demand increases since there's only, only 25% are owned outright, that creates stronger demand. If you, those are the only ones you can do if you're going to be a pot shop. So now, let's say, for example hypothetically, that you have a wholly owned building without a mortgage that has, that has a restaurant in it. That's probably a bad choice, but I'm just, I'm creating a hypothetical. Has a coffee shop in it. It is at least possible at that point that that owner's going to say, hey, I could get a lot more money for this place since there's high demand for pot shops. And since there's high demand, I could, I could charge my current occupant a great deal of money, knowing I can get it from someone else if, if these guys won't pay it. And my concern initially was that the, the short-term impact is to hurt existing businesses that are not marijuana businesses, and that it is a short-term effect. Because I agree with those who say that eventually the market will sort this out. Former Councilor Kelly, I think, he wrote me, I don't know if he wrote everybody else, but I assume he did, to say that, you know, the market's going to sort this out, and he's right. But at the point that it does, if such transitions have been made with multiple pre-existing local businesses, those folks are already out of business, and so is the pot shop now. And then we're, we're back to the places that have, you know, that are, that are empty because the market was adversely affected on a short-term basis. I still kind of want to make the next motion to accept the ordinance, but I'll hear my colleagues first.
All right, Claire.
Thank you. So thank you for the information and explaining the crime counts. I have to admit, I found the graphs a little hinky to decipher. So what, one of the things you were saying about your conversation with the commercial property managers or owners who lease sites is that basically they're saying for the most part, suitable sites that could be leased have, have mostly already been?
That was the general opinion of those that were owned free and clear, and the property owners were open to renting to marijuana.
So, and so that kind of limits the supply.
Right.
Of suitable. So on, on one hand, that seems to me to indicate that the concerns that some current shop owners have raised of out-of-town money coming in and opening a shop right next door in order to squash competition is, is rather unrealistic, because one, there probably wouldn't be a location right next door in order to do that. And then this theoretical idea that Counselor Clark has raised that property owners who are in a position, who don't have a mortgage and could not have the risk of the federal law, would throw out current tenants simply in order to raise rates and get a marijuana retail shop in there. Was, was that a question that you explored with the, the folks that you contacted?
In my brief discussions with them, we did not, I did not share that specific situation and ask them if they are aware of any of those specific incidents. I didn't get the sense that that had occurred or was a common theme, that they were aware of.
The, I mean, the small number of leases I know that have like berries over by the university, I mean, that was a mutual decision, and the people who own the property are opening the shop, so it's kind of a unique situation. So I have not heard of that happening or, or know that that's a factual thing that would happen. I'm also thinking that in terms of the property crime reduction near the current shops, my understanding is the shops have a lot of security features that's required by law, so I don't know if they have security cameras, if that's deterring property crime in the vicinity. So there is actually, I, I know that's not the topic of this discussion, but I think there's some positive things that can come from shops locating. As you mentioned, I've seen a number of properties that were transformed from very bedraggled storefronts into now very nice-looking retail shops that really improved the look, general look of the area. So I am still not convinced that we need a thousand-foot buffer. You know, the claim that every other city in Oregon has done it, I'm not saying anyone at this table has made that claim, but we have heard that from some folks in the public, is simply not true. Our neighbors in Springfield aren't doing it. And at this point, I'm not convinced it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan?
Could you go over the cities again that were, have, and do not have buffers slower?
Yes, I know, I almost wanted to pause after each, for our mental maps. So those that do not are Salem, Corvallis, Springfield, and Medford. And then up north, we have Gresham, Portland, and Hillsborough, Beaverton, and Bend.
And the ones that do?
Those are the ones that do, up, up north. I'm sorry.
Starting with Gresham?
Starting with, I don't know if I said these in order, Portland, Hillsborough, Beaverton, Gresham, and Bend do. And those that don't are Salem, Corvallis, Springfield, and Medford.
Thanks. So, yeah, it's clearly not everybody has this, this rule. And I attend, I, I agree with everything that Claire said. It kind of gets back to a fundamental question for me, which is, what's so different about this segment of the economy than every other segment in the economy, other than it's new, that begs us to intervene and regulate the marketplace? And I'm still kind of struggling with what's the overall? And I'm still kind of struggling with what's the overriding public interest that we're, I have lots of, I can see personal or selective interests being dealt with, but there doesn't seem to be any overriding principle here that I can point to that has public benefit that we need to regulate it. In that case, I tend to back off and let the market do what it's going to do. I think it was very telling about the information you said about who, what types of businesses are renting to marijuana stores, pot stores, and that likely they have already all been rented and it's going to be slow-going for new ones. And then on top of that, 71% or 40 out of 56 are already within that. So that horse already left that barn. And so I'm not, I'm having a hard time understanding who'd be benefiting from this and who, and I can see who would be hurt. Anybody who wants to put in a store that has a legal right to do that would be, could be hurt by this. So I tend to agree with Claire and not in favor of the buffer at this time.
Greg, and then Chris, and then Emily.
So we don't have thousand-foot buffers for beer and wine stores, do we?
No. And OLCC regulates the locations of alcohol sales.
As they do marijuana.
And I believe they have standards. But in our local land use code, the only standard regarding separation from anything are some sign standards.
And we don't have any demonstrable evidence that the commercial real estate, you know, market has been adversely affected by, you know, the location of marijuana outlets?
The brokers I talked to did not have the sense that that had been adverse effect. Obviously, commercial rates have increased over the last several years, but they tied that to the good economy as being the primary factor.
So, and the, you know, part of driving that good economy is occupying as, you know, as councillor Cyret so eloquently put it, bedraggled, you know, buildings. And, you know, I have a few of those that were bedraggled in my ward and councillor Cyret's ward that abuts my ward that are now, you know, they're, they vastly improved those locations. And a lot of those locations have been empty for years, for years. And I also note that we did get $106,000 check from the state for the first quarter once we have instituted our, you know, marijuana tax locally here in this community. So, you know, we may or may not agree with, you know, the rhyme and reason of legalization of marijuana, but there have been some significant positive returns that we have accrued from the businesses that have been established here locally. So, you know, I don't see where, you know, this is an issue at this point. And, you know, establishing a thousand-foot buffer and over-regulating the market, I think is an overreach for us as a municipality. And I'm not going to support this, you know, this motion.
Hey, Chris?
Thank you. I think three considerations that were topmost in my mind in terms of wanting to bring this information back. One was around crime. Do marijuana stores result in increasing crime? And I'm hearing not, not really. Another one is the issue of the degree to which the city should be involved in regulating something that's considered a vice or wrong or immoral or whatever you want to say. And I'm always cautious about the city getting involved in issues of values. What is our role in trying to regulate, you know, what people consider to be a vice or wrong? And I don't want to go down that road. And then the third one was the one around increased cost. Was it having an impact in terms of commercial real estate? And I'm hearing, while you didn't answer the question directly, you don't seem to have any information that says this is resulting in some sort of an undue impact on commercial real estate or property values or rental rates or things like that, leases?
I did not hear that from the folks I talked to.
Okay. I would think even anecdotally, someone would have shared that if there had been something like that going on, but I do not know that. I don't know that for a fact. Since none of those three have really been kind of red-flagged, I then go to the notion of, okay, if I take the kind of moral issue out of it and say, let's not talk about marijuana, let's talk about, here's a good example, coffee shops, the one that Mike brought up. We don't regulate where coffee kiosks can be. And from my sense, they are all over town. They're everywhere. But we've not stepped in to regulate coffee kiosks or shops. And I think, once again, the market sorts out where coffee kiosks or shops are. And there seem to be as many as the market will bear, and then they tend to sort out. I realize because it's been recently deregulated, it's very popular right now, but I also think that commercially it will sort itself out. And I think the impact that it's had on property values, property improvements and things like that are not outside what would be a parameter where we suddenly need to get involved. I think the crime statistics are very encouraging in terms of this actually being better and not worse for neighborhoods. And then the final one, which had to do with, do we see this suddenly exploding and going, you know, is it going to go crazy with pot shops, you know, every five feet? I don't sense that's going to happen. I would guess that probably it's going to start cooling off. I think as with any other business, it has an initial popularity and then it begins to find its level. And so my interest in intervening, I think, is relatively small. I think the market will stabilize itself, but as long as none of these conditions that would warrant our intervention are taking place, then I don't feel the need to intervene.
Emily?
Thank you. I will point out once again that we do treat marijuana shops differently and that we tax them. And it's not the same as alcohol, that's done by the state, but I feel that it's similar. So I just don't buy the arguments, well, we don't do this to anybody else. Well, we don't tax anybody else either. However, I think that although when I asked for a work session on this originally, I was in favor of the buffer. And if we're back in time, I still would be. Although it seems that putting in a dispensary decreases crime and it increases our revenue, so probably we should be encouraging more dispensaries. But since we have so many already, and then the ones that are on deck would have to be grandfathered in, I would think, I think it's too late. I think this would have been a good idea when it first started. I would rather see two and a half blocks between dispensaries. But it's too late. And since this would be more work, and I don't think it would actually have an effect, we don't need to do it. We're too late.
Greg?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm out of order. It's Mike next.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you remind me how many, you said 50, 58?
56, I believe, approved applications, some of those operating a business, some of those not yet.
We had this in a previous presentation. I'm hoping you'll have it. How many in Salem?
I did not bring with me the specific numbers for other communities.
When that was presented to us before, what we learned, at least from what was presented to us, was that we have literally three times the number of pot shops on a population, on an equalized population basis as any other city in Oregon. Does that sound about right to you?
The number in Portland of approved locations in March or maybe at the end of February was just over 100. And so I remember looking at the numbers.
Like 10 times the population.
It seemed that Eugene, if not the highest per capita, was close to the highest per capita.
Yeah, we're, per capita, the presentation before isn't mine, but the presentation before that was that per capita, we have three times as many as any other, the next highest city in Oregon. For me, the effect with that is demand. There aren't demand for liquor stores, although customers may disagree. There aren't, there isn't demand to open liquor stores or coffee shops in the same kind of way that there is for this. But I agree with the three criteria that Chris used, and they were mine as well. I had anecdotal information of two businesses that came to me who were not marijuana dealers who were doing other things, and I think everybody's aware of one of them, that were having pressure put on them for the amount of rent they were paying to increase substantially, saying, well, if you can't make it, we'll just get a pot shop in here. That was concerning to me. That's why I brought it up. That's why I asked for the work session. For me, that seemed like it could have a negative effect. But again, I agree with you, and I'm the last guy at this table, I think, to want to create new regulation unless there's an express need for it. For me, I saw that need in the sense that it could have a short-term detrimental effect on non-pot business owners in town. But I can also count. So I don't believe, unless I've changed someone's mind just now, I'll be asking this motion to move forward.
Okay. Greg?
You know, and I know Glenn was around when this, when this was brought up as an issue and was passed as an ordinance. Remember, when we, well, I wasn't here at the time, but this council addressed the issue around malt liquor sales. Yeah, and, you know, didn't we, didn't we ban malt liquor sales or didn't we, or we were trying to deal with?
The state.
The state did. So, you know, we usually take action to address an existing problem. In my estimation, right now, we don't have an existing problem with marijuana. We have an existing problem with beer and wine. And quite frankly, the people that I have heard from in Claire's ward and in other places where we have had an explosion of beer and wine outlets, both in bars and retail and other kinds of, you know, facilities, has been far more impactful in a lot of different ways than, you know, marijuana outlets have been. We don't have the evidence yet to suggest that marijuana has had the kind of adverse impact in our communities as, say, what is going on in the wit? Or the fact that I walk into Fred Meyer and go to the back, you know, and to get my beer and walk back there and there's literally a bar back there. There is.
Oh, the growler thing.
The growler, yeah. So, you know, you can go get your growl on, walk out of, walk out of Fred Meyer, get into your car, and go down the street, and you're legally intoxicated. That's an issue. Or you go across the street to Albertson's and you can get your beer or wine over there. We don't have thousand-foot buffers, you know, restricting those kinds of sales in place now. So what we have is a problem with how we treat intoxicants, period, and the differentiation between, you know, legal intoxicants that are consumed because they come out of the ground naturally or, you know, are brewed or, you know, whatever that we do otherwise. So I think until we kind of wrap our heads around all of this stuff, I don't see where we need to legislate for problems that don't exist yet.
One more. Jennifer, go for it.
I think that Emily answered this question for me, but for the establishments that already exist, would the plan be to grandfather them in so they wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to deal with moving them around?
Right. If the council did direct the city manager to adopt this new standard, all of the previous uses would have a non-conforming status and could continue operating as they are.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I actually don't, would not support this. I think, while I don't agree that you have to wait for something to be a problem to address it, I don't really see this as being a huge problem that we need to regulate. So I would not support the ordinance.
Okay. So today was not a decision-making day unless it would be up to councillor. So I think we're finished with that order of business, and Claire has one more piece that she just wants to bring to the table for a couple minutes.
Thanks. So I just wanted to make a request from the council. I could send this out in a formal work session call if that's the preference, but I wanted to see if you would grant consideration of this. So we've received a few emails from a property owner, I believe they're on Sixth, Tanya Madison, or actually on Eighth, sorry, who is seeking an exemption to the thousand-foot-from-a-school rule. And at a certain point, I had referred her to the city attorney, and I believe he sent her an opinion that because of the location, he did not believe that she, that that site would qualify for an exemption. This property owner has continued to petition us to consider the exemption. And so my request would be, if there is time at our Monday evening work session for the council to consider an exemption, whether or not to grant the exemption, rather than just leaving it as an opinion of the city attorney. And Glenn has offered to help with supporting information. We did at one point discuss criteria for making this decision to kind of bring some rationality to it, so we would have that presented to us as well. So that's the request. If you prefer, I send it out as a formal work session call. I will do that. But if you're willing to give approval to have this consideration today, that would expedite the process.
Yeah. So do we just need a head nod of people willing to consider this on Monday as part of that meeting?
Sure.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. I think we're.
I think we should have to vote on it.
To vote?
As a poll, we have to say.
Okay. All right. So all in favor of bringing this to the Monday meeting?
For consideration.
One, two, for consideration. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you. Thank you. That's fine.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.